All right, good morning. It's Thursday, February 4th, 2021. This is a regular meeting of the Jefferson County Commission. It's 9:30 Warren. Commissioner Stolper, can you please lead us to the pledge of allegiance?
Let's give the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, first order of business. We have a very packed agenda, so I'm going to stick to our timeframes. So things will be very brief. Also, when someone is presenting on their item, I'd like them to finish their presentation themselves before anybody interjects. That includes other commissioners and staff members, if that's okay, so we can get through this in a timely fashion. We have board review at 1:30 and a 3:30 special meeting with legislators. So the first order of business is approval of the minutes for January 15th, 2021 special session.
I'll move it.
I'll second that. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Next is January 21st, 2021 regular meeting minutes.
Second.
Any discussions?
I have a few wish corrections. Let's see, on page one, it's just minor, but second line, it says we're in the fourth quarterly session. We're in the first quarterly session, or maybe, yeah, for the new year. And on page five, it's under item number two C. There is a motion on the floor, but it doesn't. We need to add that the motion was seconded, and I believe it was unanimously approved. Somebody else may remember better than me, but I think you have.
I hear your correction. All right, so do we accept those amendments, Commissioner Tab?
Yes.
Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Next is minutes for January 25th, 2021 special session.
I'll move it.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 All right, next is approval of the minutes for January 28th, 2021 board review. All abstaining because it's not there.
Submitted. Second.
Any discussion?
I'll just abstain from the vote since I wasn't there.
Okay, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Ayes.
Opposed? Just note, there's two ayes, three ayes and two extensions. Commissioner Tab and myself. Next, we'll move to approval of requisitions for February 4th, 2021. I'll move your approval of those in the amount of $44,214.
Second. Is it 14 or 14.1?
Is it 41? It's 14.
And then what?
$44,214. Any discussion on that? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 All right, next, we'll move to approval of accounts payable for January 28th, 2021.
I'll move approval of accounts payable, January 28th, 2021. Total amount, $68,383.57.
Second.
Any discussions? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Motion passed unanimously. Next is approval of account table for February 4th, 2021. I'll move that in the amount of $727,330.66.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Next, we'll move to approval of manual checks for February 5th, 2021.
I'll move approval of manual checks, February 5th, 2021, $2,240.
Second.
Any discussions? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Next, approval of payroll for January 21st, 2021. I'll move that in the amount of $263,214.21. Any discussion on that? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. Do we have any announcements?
I have one announcement. There are, there's an item under my report that is entitled 911 phone update. And I would like our IT staff here, our IT consultant, Tom Riley and Russell Burgess. And I think also the director of 911, Mr. Pouloski, will join us for that. It may require an executive session because it is a contract negotiation. But I have told them that we would do that tentatively at 11:20. We can change that time if you want to. They need about 30 minutes notice to be ready there. Actually, I've been 911 updating something else today.
Let's, I think, let's say 11:30. And we'll stick to it. We tell them 11:00 or whatever. I just, I think we can get through a lot of this. I know there's a lot on the agenda. So I think 11:30 is fine, because everybody's. Okay, so.
I'm going to go ahead and let the move out and then I'll change it.
All right. Any further announcements? All right.
I don't have one.
Okay. This clock is really throwing me off here. Is Sheriff Hanson going to be here in person, I guess?
He did say that he was going to be here in person, and I do not see him on our list of attendees.
Okay, so I, I'm going to jump down to new business. Just a public comment. The job of the public, we'll move to public comment.
If there's anyone in attendance who would like to make public comment, you can use the raise your hand icon, and I will unmute you. Or you could also send me a chat, and I could make, and you can make public comment that way. So if there's anyone attending virtually who would like to make public comment, you can use the raise your hand function or the chat function to let me know that you're interested in making public comment. Not seeing many takers today.
Are you going to always submit the unrequited comments to the commission as well if you choose to do so? All right, so we'll actually, if it's okay, jump to agenda number two. Jackie Shale, clerk of the county commission, approval of employment for two vacant assistant clerk positions. And Shale, is it okay if we do that real quick?
That's fine.
Okay. She right with us.
Hey, darling.
I'm going right.
Is that thing on?
Apparently they can pick up, and it doesn't make any sense to everyone but me. And I'm right here in front of the computer, which is why I have this. Should be able to pick her up, and I have everything.
So I'm here before you to get approval of the two hires that I was before you before. And the reason I did not put that on the agenda request is because I was still doing interviews, and I didn't have the applicants chosen at the time when I submitted the agenda request. So the two positions were for an assistant clerk, and I just want to go over what we advertised. We're seeking a motivated professional to fill the role of assistant clerk. Duties would include data entry, recording, scanning, answering phones, handling cash, document research, map reading, issuing official documents, election duties, customer service, working in a team environment, and other duties as asked or required. Interested applicant must have excellent verbal and written communication skills and have the ability to perform very detail-oriented tasks. And the requirements in the advertisement was high school diploma required, minimum of three to five years' experience. I just wanted to go over that with you. So the two candidates that I chose, one of them is Amanda Hefner. She's had 18 years of administrative experience. She's highly motivated, excited to join the team, and I think she will be committed. Both of these people have current positions for, this one is about. Current position. This one has worked. She has 21 years' experience working for the state. So the first one I would like to hire is Amanda Hefner, and I'd like to hire her at $32,000. The second person is Kelly Sparks. She comes highly recommended. She's worked with attorneys. She worked with the Bureau of Child Support Enforcement and DHHR. So she's, has very high qualifications, and I'd like to start her at $33,000.
I mean, these are seasoned experience individuals.
They're not coming straight out right. Yes.
As far as your budget, I mean, you understand come budget time. Our budget's going to be pretty tight, as is yours probably.
This is budget neutral, my current budget. And I actually have more money that I could have probably given them, but this, I think, is comparable with other hires. So it's budget neutral.
Do you have questions for Ms. Shadle? Commissioner Tab, any questions? Are they on mute?
Yeah, I know. Just so we get the motion straight, what would their start dates be?
Okay, Kelly Sparks would begin March 1st at $33,000. And Amanda Hefner, she would begin February 18th at $32,000.
Okay. All right, thanks.
You're welcome.
I'm moving to hire for the two individuals. Our name along with their salaries.
Any discussion? Just quick thing, so these are experienced individuals. That is why the salary is a little higher. And Ms. Shadle pulls this into her budget, and she has looked at the numbers. I believe her, just, there is a county policy for new hires that are not experienced and for certain thresholds of salary increases. I just want all licensed officials to be cognizant of that policy. Seeing how these individuals have years and years of experience, I don't see how the introductory salary would apply. Just again, budget time will be tight. Keep in mind, as long as your individual department budget is in line, I just want everybody to be aware of that, and Shadle included. Any further discussion on this? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Senator.
Yep, I see the line. Thank you.
Sheriff, can you hear us? I think you're on mute, Sheriff, or Stephanie muted you.
Yes, I hear you. I hear you, Commissioner.
There you go. The first, first thing you have here is a reclassification of bailiffs. All right.
Commissioner, I'm going to answer that. We table that until next meeting. I need some more data on that.
Okay, and I, as you're aware, there was a situation with the previous sheriff's office last year concerning that, so.
Yes, sir. That's, again, that's why I'm asking to table it until next meeting.
All right, I appreciate that. So we'll move to the home confinement officer.
Yes, I appointed a part-time bailiff to be the assistant home confinement officer, and Judge Hammer is deemed to, he wants her to be full-time. So I'm asking permission to move her from a part-time status to full-time status.
So I think this is going to have to be looked at at budget time. I don't know if the money exists in your current budget to allow that. I don't know if we have any clarification on that either.
Well, we have, we do have home confinement funds to cover the change in her status, at least for this year and on forward into next year.
The home confinement fund is a sheriff's dedicated fund. That's his, that's his funding if he has money to. And I don't know what's in that fund.
Right now, right now, approximately $60,000.
Okay, so that's fine. It's your fund, and you say you have the money, and I don't have a problem. Just obviously you have to keep an eye on that to make sure you have the money next year.
I certainly will.
Okay, so I move. Go ahead, Commissioner Tab.
I have a question, and I'm not trying to be the bad guy here, but somebody told me that they thought Ms. Johnson might be related to you in some way, Mr. Sheriff Hanson. I don't know if that's.
She's my stepdaughter, but she's been a bailiff now, long before I took office. She's been employed by Sheriff Darty years ago. The, they, the home confinement deputy corporal said he needed a female, and that was the only female ad available. So I moved her to that position.
Well, I understand that, but you know, there is the, you are her supervisor, and I think that can cause problems. So I'd like to check with our attorney on that detail. I realize she fits the qualifications, but you know, the familiar, familiar.
Oh, I believe it. Commissioner, I understand nepotism, and I understand what you're trying to say. And I, had I not, had I had another female bailiff or female employee that was willing to do the job, I would have sent them there. But again, I didn't hire my stepdaughter. She's been an employee for the county for numerous years, and in fact, so with that being said, believe me, there'll be no, there'll be no, I guess you say nepotism, there'll be no, how would I say, there's no, she wouldn't get any different treatment than any other person with me, and she's underneath a corporal, and the corporal has come to me, asked me to her to be full-time, and telling her that she's doing an outstanding job in this position.
Oh, thank you for that explanation.
I have a question.
Commissioner Jackson.
Didn't we just agree to appoint, so will Jesse Jones be a supervisor of purpose? Isn't he?
You know, Corporal Thomas, who is a sworn deputy, is her, is her job, but she'll be working closely with Judge Hammer. And I'm quite sure if I get any information from Judge Hammer that she's not living up to her expectations, she will be dealt with.
Okay. And then I just have a question on the salary, because if she's going from part-time to full-time, obviously, full-time includes benefits.
Yes.
What's that difference?
Right now, she's making $13 an hour. I don't know what the full-time benefits would be. I've never dealt with that. I know she'll, she'll go to approximately $20,000, $24,000 a year as full-time, as opposed to the 20 hours she's getting at $13 an hour, which is, which I can, wait a minute, I can give you numbers, but.
Quick thing, Sheriff. Deputy. You're showing this as part of.
So we actually moved benefits out of the elected's budgets because sometimes they were being used by electeds to fund salary if a person, if they had a reduction in benefits. And then sometimes they were hiring and couldn't cover the benefit. So we are covering the benefits that would actually come out of our line.
To that point, can we, the budget is a week or two weeks here. Is there, I mean, I understand the salary is coming out of your home confinement salary money. The benefits are coming out of the county's money. So I think we should hold off on this for a week or two to see how this plays into the county commission budget also. I don't anticipate it being a large amount of money here. But I think it should be prudent to just, can we hold off for two weeks, or is that an issue?
No, it's not an issue. I just, I'm just trying to fulfill the Judge Hammer's request, that's all.
Yeah, I recognize that. Judge Hammer needs to understand too that we have to pay for this also. So we need to make sure that we're paying for it adequately, have the money for it. I understand it's coming out of home confinement. Can she continue part-time for the next two weeks part of the budget?
Yes, sir, if she can.
This isn't, yes, this isn't really the commission's issue, but there are some ethics opinions on people getting elected and people who had already worked for the county. I don't recall off the top of my head what those opinions say, but I think, and this is just for the sheriff. He could reach out to the ethics commission and get an opinion on that, and then he would be totally protected because you can use that as a defense.
Do you hear that, Sheriff?
Yes, sir, that's fine.
The two big areas, we'll do that, and we'll look at the money of the budget and I'll talk to.
That's fine, sir. I want to do everything that's above board. I don't want anything, anybody, anything hidden. And had I known that you, I would have told anybody that she was my stepdaughter, but that's fine.
Okay.
I'm not saying that there is anything unethical about it, but I know that there are ethics opinions on it. I haven't read them in a little bit, so I don't remember exactly what they say. But I always recommend that people reach out to the ethics commission because it protects them.
Yeah.
That's fine. After, after notifying that she would go up to approximately $27,000 at $13 an hour. So that's, that's, that's the annual salary, so.
Okay, so we'll reapproach the home confinement officer for February, I think, 18th meeting, is it? That should give you two weeks to talk to the ethics place, and we'll talk about budget. It should probably not be an issue, Sheriff, so.
I don't think it is, because I know sheriffs have had, that have nephews and been sworn deputies. So the Morgan County, the former Morgan County sheriff had his nephew as a sworn deputy. So I don't, there won't be any ethics problems, but I'll, I'll let you take, we can table it till then, Commissioner.
All right, let's move to the next item. Increase of pledged securities to the banks, Charlestown, Jackson Security Bank, and Branch Banking and Trust, BBNT, which I think is called Truist Bank or something.
A letter's been sent to the county, to the county clerk, to the banks, asking us because of the amount of monies we have in our accounts to raise the insurance.
So is there any, is this just notifying the county that this is being done?
Yes, sir, that's all we're, all we're doing is notifying the county commission it's been done, yes.
So there's no action on our part.
No, sir.
All right, thank you, Sheriff. Is there anything else, or are you going to?
That's it, sir, thank you, and I guess I'll see you in two weeks.
Yeah, definitely. Take care.
Thank you. Bye.
All right, so we're a little early. Chad Wallen isn't on the line, I think. With that in mind, I'm going to jump down to new business real quick. Three. The first bullet point is transfer of the GIS office to the IT department. That's what, get this conversation initially started, looking at pros and cons of doing such, and just put that out there for initial acceptance. Stephanie, you want to provide any backup of how this could help the county?
Sure. So I did speak with Russ and Tom Riley yesterday. I also spoke with Roger Goodwin, who's the director of engineering. And there are going to be, we are in the progress of updating several of our systems at the communication center, which if you've ever visited there, it's very IT-intensive. But it's also very GIS-intensive. So when we first added a GIS position, it was actually at the 911 center under the director of communications. I'm just writing you like every history. Then it became its own department, and then there was a consolidation, probably in 2015. And they consolidated planning, zoning, engineering, impact fees, and GIS under one department head. We do need more IT staff, I believe. You know, everybody who works in the county works on a computer mostly. Even, even our maintenance staff carry the tablets around to pull the work orders off the work order system. I believe that when we do upgrade our 911 systems, which are in progress, we're going to talk about the new phone system. That will have a text to 911 component where you can text your emergency to 911. That will be very GIS-intensive, so that will be supported by GIS. Mr. Goodwin did have some concerns. Todd, who is our GIS professional, and his shop, so we have three people in GIS now. We have Todd, who is our GIS professional. We have Jennifer, who's a mapper. And then we have Rhonda, who is the assistant who administers the addressing ordinance. He, Todd has shepherded through the paperless system in, in the engineering department. So eventually people will be able, I mean, they can today, apply online. And that, we are in the middle of backscanning all of the permits. So eventually people will be able to do the entire process, the land use process, online. And that was, Todd spearheaded that project and has been in charge of that project, has been the project manager for that. We'd want to ensure that that support continues. I spoke to Russ about that yesterday. Russ is also very supportive of that project. You know, since he's become our IT director, there has been an initiative to make us more and more online-friendly so that people don't have to come in person, and they can sit at home and do their county business. And Roger just wanted to make sure that Todd would be able to continue to work on that project and shepherd it in. But I think if you move them to IT, there would be some more, that would give us more IT staff. They spend a lot of time at the 911 center. And with the GIS applications that we're getting ready to deploy in 911, you're going to see more and more of that support, that IT slash GIS support.
So it's a quick thing, so I guess department heads, Roger and Russ, don't have a problem with this, except for that one instance?
Yeah, I think Roger was a little concerned. Russ does not have a problem with it. I think Russ would be in favor of moving. And I think Tom Riley is also in favor of moving the entire department. And when you move GIS, you're going to have to move addressing as well, because they go hand in hand.
I guess too, I mean, this is more like reallocating county resources to a more needed and appropriate department based upon what's going on currently as far as technology and upgrades and so forth.
So, yes. I mean, just, we have two and a half IT people to support 195 employees. And we, I mean, we could definitely use more, more IT support. Also for succession planning for GIS, I don't think Todd plans on working at the county forever, so we'll need a succession plan to replace him when he's gone so to continue to support the 911 system. And there is a very large component to 911. And Todd also does a fair amount for planning and zoning, but I think the GI, we're about to become, as I said, more GIS-intensive in 911 because of the upgrade in the system.
But just last thing for me that I'll open it up. There is, this is not adding more work to county employees, is it? They're already doing a lot of this work?
Yeah, I, I don't think it would add more work to them. I don't, my impression of Todd, I've worked closely with him for many years. He'll do whatever you ask him to do. He's always willing to help out. He's, like I said, he's taken on that project in engineering for the paperless system. So I don't, I don't think that it would create more work for him where he would be overburdened with his staff, because you're going to be, if you do it, you would be moving three people to IT. The other thing that perhaps you need to consider is that location. So IT is in the basement of the Mason Building. GIS is on the third floor of the Mason Building. I talked to Russ. It's just geography. He didn't really seem to think that he needed, you know, GIS right under his nose to be able to manage them.
Got you. Commissioner Tab, is there a man raised?
Yeah, that's why I'm glad Stephanie explained location because, you know, the big printers for the mapping and so forth are up in GIS. And you move them, I think that would be expensive. Not undoable, but expensive. And, and the reason, you know, an independent GIS office was created years ago was when we started the E911 addressing project, which took several years to accomplish. So I do think it makes sense to merge the departments, and if they're both in the same building, then supervision can be provided as necessary.
Any other, oh, Commissioner, all those?
I would be great. I, before, I would move motion to go ahead and transfer the office of IT department with the GIS. And also want to say, I think all.
In that, I think, if it's GIS, I, I don't think.
To the IT department, GIS, I'm going to put my glasses on, sorry. You got to be interested in that. Also want to, I also want to say that I know that the GIS is working on the project for Roger. And I just want all departments to know that we all work for the same entity. We all work for the county, so we're all under one big umbrella. And I would personally like to see the IT department sometime start tracking stuff on, with engineering and putting stuff together online with like per test and, and stuff like that, as well to a time to the P. So I think this will give them more staff to do that. And I know one of the, one of the young ladies used to work on the planning mission side, the planning side. So she's very familiar with that process too. So there's, my motion is to move that we disallyad these departments.
Second. Any further discussion on this?
I have a question. Do we anticipate any lifetime in engineering movement?
I don't, I think it's really just moving money around and whom people are reporting to. Um, but I don't see any, any lag time, I think, uh, you know, I've expressed to Russ that that, that project in engineering is very important, it should continue, project should continue to support that, he's in agreement with it. So I think it's just a matter of moving the, the, the money from one department to another department and actually just who they're reporting to. Um, we may wanna maybe have, like, just a couple of weeks to kind of have a planning meeting so that we can, you know, decide how it's gonna work, but it should be pretty seamless.
Can I, can you mind if I amend your motion to include the start date of potentially March 1st? Okay, it sounds like everybody on both sides are in agreement except for that one circumstance, Todd working on that, which is gonna be taken care of. So, any further discussion on this? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion passes. All right, uh, I'm gonna just, is Mr., uh,
Mr. Wallen is online now.
Online, right, so let's jump back to that.
Mr. Chairman, I gotta accuse myself of this, Jim.
Note for the record that Mr. Commissioner Stolper has accused himself of agenda number three. All right, so this is, uh, Chad Wallen, Gordon Associates Sheets, Zoning Map Amendment, Request for Public Hearing and Referral to the Planning Commission to Review Zoning Amendment, Request for the 2.1 acre property identified in Charlestown District 2, map number 16, portion of parcel 1. Mr. Wallen, can you hear us?
Yes, good morning, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you. Can you write a quick rundown of what this is exactly, I think I know what it is, just for the public's benefit?
Yeah, it's a rezoning request for a property at the intersection of Route 340 and Augustine Avenue. Uh, this request is to refer it to the Planning Commission for review, uh, with comprehensive plan and to set up public hearing before the County Council.
Okay. Thank you, so it needs to be within 90 days or 60?
60 days.
60 days?
And I would, I would point out to the Commission, um, that this has to be referred to the Planning Commission. I think that their next available regular meeting is March the 9th. And, um, then this, then the hearing should be held after.
The 18th, so we can tentatively have a hearing after the County Commission meeting, the 18th, if that's okay with everybody?
Is that the?
The regularly scheduled meeting.
Is that the Thursday night meeting?
Thursday night meeting.
Yeah, I, I think so.
Okay, so I move to accept the zoning map amendment request and refer to the Planning Commission for review of the comprehensive planning consistency and to schedule a public hearing for the County Commission at 6:30 PM, March 18th.
Sir.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And we just, just to note for the record, there is four, uh, yay, is there one exception? We're moving along pretty good, is, is Kelly Franklin on by chance? Okay, so I'm gonna, we have a large agenda, so I'm gonna be jumping back and forth, just to get these things knocked out. We're gonna go back to new business on page three. The second bullet point, permitting and inspections of small businesses in Jefferson County. So, I put this on here because I was contacted by a few, uh, up and coming new small businesses in the county on how stringent some of the inspections have been to the tune of, this is almost not worth starting a small business in Jefferson County. I shouldn't be hearing from small businesses trying to get off the ground with wordage like that. I mean, we wanna be very welcoming here and open our doors for small business and make it as easy as possible. I don't wanna hear things of, your sign is too big, where's your permit for your sign, if it's an inch too small or too big. So, I, I don't know what we can do, I know it's state law as far as building inspection code. You may not be able to answer this, this may be a Roger question. Is there anything the County Commission can do to make it easier to get through some inspections or permitting at the county level?
So the, the building code is the state code, you don't have any ability to, uh, modify that, you cannot add to it, you cannot subtract from it. Um, from some of our other codes, you could make them more, um, you know, if it, if it's coming from our organs, we could revise those to make them less stringent. Um, if there's a particular case, um, you know, we could look at that particular case and see what's going on if there's a particular complaint where they feel like they're being treated unfairly. Um, you know, we, we could look at it, is it, was it a sign issue specifically, or, okay, there's just one example, okay? Okay.
I guess my thing, right, I'm not asking anybody not to do a proper inspection or anything like that. I just, I understand some of those inspections are dependent upon who the inspector is.
Okay.
One inspector wants the, the overtly inspector versus not inspecting as much as they probably should be. I don't think either or is good. Like, just follow the law and let the small business get off the ground. And that's all we're trying to do here. I don't think we also want to chime in here, but.
I was just gonna say, I, I don't necessarily wanna be in the business and doing a case by case basis and hearing every small business complaint for a complete inspection, we need something
Yeah.
solid and consistent to, that we can refer to when we do have the complaints or to track the small business owners to. So we need something that, we need to understand what we can do to help.
As far as ordinances and stuff.
Typically, they, you can, you can refer them to me, um, and I will, you know, and I'll, and I have, I haven't gotten any complaints from small businesses, but there have been, you know, there are occasionally complaints over the years, you know, somebody unhappy with a zoning decision or a planning decision, and I've worked through those. But I, I, they will, you know, they, they should be following the code as it's written. Um, and if they're not doing that, that's a problem, or if they're being overly nitpicky. Um, you could, we could.
I think, I think they're following the code, but to such an extent where it's inhibiting small business growth and frankly, taking on some of these people trying to start small businesses. It's hard enough starting a small business, always have a county inspector add to the problem. So I, I, I just wanna put that out there, I mean, we have to be very welcoming and do as much as we can to help these people lift it off the ground, start a business. And I don't think that's actually occurring in some instances. Sir.
We, what I, what I think, I hear in different cases, case by case, I haven't heard it for a while, but I think we should have a general email set up. It could be, it could be a hotline at Planning and Zoning Department, or, uh, or most of them would be. It could go for Planning and Zoning and inspections. And then that email, it could be anonymous, doesn't matter, somebody, however they want it. Um, and then that e, those emails should be forwarded to Stephanie and all the commissioners to see. You know, so, sometimes the complaints are warranted. Some, some people, I know I've heard in the past, thought the, the guidelines were too hard, too stringent, but that's just some of them are state code, so I'm gonna feel about that. I think what we run into a lot, what I hear a lot is, you have a guy that owns, uh, acres, he's born and raised here, so had been in the family for a long time, and he wants to go do something with it. But he just thinks you walk in town, get a permit, just like that, it's supposed to be that easy, but, um, and then they feel that, there is a process, so, uh, part of it's educating the process. So, so some of them aren't warranted, they just thought it should be easier than it is, and there's no way to do that. But I think the hotline or some type of e-mail, so people will have an outlet to, to, uh, to let us know what's going on and, and, and make sure they're forwarded to everybody, so we can see what they are.
I'll go back to a, a previous topic too, is even the inspections, we need to make sure they're consistent, the guidelines that are being followed or being applied across the board to every business. No skipping the line if you're filling out a form or, you know,
Yeah.
embellishing or whatever, there should be a consistent process on these inspections, that there's no. So, i- if it's coming in, you know, complaints are coming in, and the inspections are, um, yeah, agree, a hotline or something for those to come in, but the process itself should be consistent.
Yeah.
When we start DBAing, we end up in trouble.
And I, I think they are, I mean, as far as I know, they are following, they have a process that they follow. I don't think there's anybody receiving any special treatment. Um, but it is, you know, so if I have an example, that's a real world example, like this application, this person thought that, if you can look at that and kind of extrapolate, okay, what's going on here? Is this a problem, or is it, you know, or is it not a problem? I think it is easier to have a complaint hotline, so you can look at them and say, because sometimes we do get complaints, and we look at them and they're not, I mean, people just don't, well, they just don't, sometimes they just don't wanna go through the process. Or they don't understand the process, and sometimes, you know, maybe it did take too long or something like that. So I think they, uh, uh, we could set up an email like that where people could, and then we could look at it. Uh, and when we do get complaints, I look at, you know, if they contact me, we look at everyone, and I say, hey, I got a complaint, we need to research this, um, this application and see what's going on here, so we look at every complaint.
Hotline, so that would cost like, man, I think the email is the best.
Email, I meant email, that's.
I, I think that's a good idea, that motion to create one or?
Yeah, yeah, and, and just before I make the question, I also wanna say, there are two sides to every story too, so when we share these complaints, uh, there.
I see, Commissioner Tab.
And, uh, wait.
So I thought you were interrupting. Commissioner Tab?
And I think we need to, I think the hotline is a good idea, but I think we need, uh, hopefully it'll be an education, uh, process for some folks, because I've, you know, the Health Department has its own regulations too, and a lot of small businesses include food. So, um, and that's not, our guys don't always inspect that. So I think, uh, that's a component we need to, uh, clarify for folks in that whose response, you know, we don't control the Health Department inspections. So, I don't know if that's mixed up in some of these complaints or not.
Not, I, I understand the subject issue, that, those are not the ones I've been saying, but you could put an asterisk under the email saying this, these do not pertain to Health Department, et cetera, something like, I think that's a good idea, Commissioner Tab.
And if commissioners, if you, if you do get a specific complaint, you can refer them to me, or once we set up the email, you can refer them to the email as well. But if you have someone who's complaining about something, feel free to refer them to me, or Roger.
It would be nice, you could set that email up if this motion is approved, and it automatically sends the email to the commissioners and county administration. So when, so you don't have to keep, like, going, yeah, I'm sure Russ, they're pretty good over there. I mean, he probably sets them up and automatically forwards those emails. You, you, Stephanie, I don't doubt that you can handle these one, on one basis, but you're busy enough. It ensures we'll all get that email if one is sent to this main email.
Um, I'd like to note in the motion then to set up an email hotline, um, to distribute to the commissioners and county administrators instead of.
Sir.
Any further discussion on that? Do we include an asterisk or something to make them aware that that is not to file complaints regarding Health Department issues? Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion passes unanimously. This clock is really throwing me off right here. 10:15, is Miss Kelly Franklin on by chance? Okay, well, okay, so I'm gonna, so I'm gonna keep going down the line here. I know we're hitting these pretty quick, we're gonna take agenda. The third point on new business is, uh, initial discussion on proppers versus impact fees. So again, a few things, I don't know if they're even legally possible in West Virginia, what can it be used for? This is all stemming with the fact that public safety has been a large priority of this commission and many previous commissions. If we were able to do something along the lines of proppers, it may give the county the ability to help fire departments fund apparatus going forward. So, I just wanna put that out there, I know impact fees have specific laws and guidelines, the one they can be used for, most of which is not public safety, a very small increment of it is, but not enough to make a substantial difference. So, I don't know, Stephanie, I know we're going to see a lot here, can you clarify, are proppers even allowed in West Virginia?
They are, um, but unfortunately, it looks like they're tied to impact fees. Um, so, my reading of the confection, and I don't wanna step on the buttons to this here, um, but I could quickly glance at the proppers confection, and it looks like, um, they're always tied to impact fees, so proppers are in lieu of an impact fee. So I'll give you an example, um, that we had here, the New High School, well, I guess it's not New, no, Washington High School. Um, that, um, property was donated by a developer, and they got an offset from their impact fees when they donated that property. So we valued the property and said, okay, this is the offset to the impact fee. It looks like that is how proppers are envisioned in the code. That is my quick reading, uh, I didn't do a lot, you know, I didn't do a lot of research on that. I basically just pulled up the confection and looked at it. So, if you want a more in-depth answer, you may want to refine that.
Proppers and the land use, land development are governed by 8A16. Um, I would prefer to perhaps defer a further discussion on this, perhaps to the next. I don't know if there's any other, um, other reading of that.
That's, I, this was just to put it out there for the initial discussion, I didn't expect either of you or anybody here to be able to fully explain everything of the possibilities of doing so. So, that's why we can take it off to the next meeting and get further clarification, if there is any.
So, one of the things that I want to add to Nate, or mention to Nate and Stephanie, is I know the impact fees, um, can only, you can only use that for apparatus addition, additions to a fire company. Um, where most of their costs in a fire company is replacement. So, that's why I would thought being proppers might be something to look at for replacement instead of addition to fire apparatus, uh, fire trucks and tankers and, and ambulances. So, uh, that's kind of where, I think, that's, that's where I would like to see the research done. So again, two, I guess. But, the other, go ahead.
No, I don't want to make any further recommendations, I guess. Commissioner Tab?
You know, that this gets, uh, awful tangled web here, uh, trying to figure out how to fund all these things. Um, but unfortunately, impact fees can't be used, as you said, Commissioner Stolper, for replacements. And also, we've realized it cannot be used to fund fire departments since the county does not own any of that property. So there is another conundrum to deal with when trying to find funding sources.
I think there is a way that we could put the impact fees back in play for fire departments. I think they are actually using our allocation. Um, some of them are, are definitely using our allocation for capital projects. So, you know, Bakerden uses up, usually, our allocation to pay the mortgage of the capital project that the taxpayers are paying for. Um, and so that's what determines whether an impact fee can be charged or not, is are the current, is the current tax base contributing toward the current level of service? And the idea behind impact fees is that new growth, who hasn't been, you know, paying taxes over the years, pays their fair share when they move in. And I realize that there are people who have lived here, when they build new houses, they get hit by that impact fee too. But the, the idea is that new growth pays for the expansion that it will cause. So, if we could track our allocation and say, yes, this allocation is actually being used to, you know, to purchase equipment, to fund fire departments, it, we can prove that we're using tax money to fund these services, and then the impact fees come into play. We just, we have to be able to say how much of that is being used, or how much we are contributing from the general fund, from the taxpayer's share, um, to fund this equipment and to keep, to maintain that level. So what is our portion of the current level of service?
You get receipts from fire departments for their contribution amounts, so you should be able to pull those receipts and add them all, and see what the amount is for replacement or.
Well, I calculated it previously, uh, there was a representative, um, fire and rescue, and at the time, they swore that the County Commission didn't provide them anything. Um, but I, I don't know, like I said, I, I don't know that that was actually a thing, that we're using it, uh, to, to fund. So yeah, now that we are getting receipts, we could pull that, we could extrapolate that data from there.
We'll, we'll hold off for further clarification, but there may be some opportunities here based upon existing money being used to possibly help some. Anything further from anybody? All right.
Uh, the commercial impact fees, so basically not collecting a commercial impact fees, but that's where you get a lot of your public safety, tho- those fees are, uh, for, for commercial. But we're, since we're not collecting it, we're not getting a lot of, um, the EMS, the Sheriff's Department, because we're essentially not collecting an impact fee on commercial. And I know that that's a decision that the commission made to try to encourage commercial growth, but, um, they are a big payer of impact fees for, uh, for public safety.
You know, previous commission years ago, not this current commission, and from what I understand, we got clarification on, say, Rockwell, what they would have paid, the number was not very extensive. Maybe we can double check that number to be absolutely certain that it was that number. So, that's all the blame to that also. But I think we're good there, I, uh. Okay, yeah, let's move back to agenda item number four. Okay, let's move back to agenda item number four. And that's, this Kelly Franklin, Director, Jefferson County Day Report Center, approval of the four-year 22 West Virginia correction fee. How are you doing, ma'am? Yeah, you have seats.
So today I'm here to present the fiscal year 22 community corrections grant to the commission. Of course, this is a grant that we apply for on behalf of the commission. Typically, we receive a county match of $150,000, which is budgeted in the allotment each year. This year, we are asking for slightly more through the grant, in the amount of 167,000. The community corrections grant is an investment within the community, of course. It supports public safety. It brings additional medical and mental health treatment to those in our community, and it also assists with keeping the jail bill down. You know, this is a small investment with a large return within the community. And another thing with this grant is it allows us to provide mental and medical health treatment within 72 hours, where a lot of places require six weeks to get a patient in. So the reason we are asking for a bit more in the grant that we are applying for is so we can provide additional services. We're not asking more from the county. Again, the county required match will be provided through the allotment. So the, what I need today, if the commission votes on this, is permission to enter the agreement with Division of Justice and Administrative Services to pursue this grant for the county.
So I guess, and that's a vital question, the county contribution is not changing for this, you're just asking for more from the grant?
That is correct.
The county contribution is 150 for the other commissioners, it has been for two years. As of right now, I don't anticipate that changing that budget, granted I'm one commissioner. I don't have a problem signing it, right, there's approval. Stephanie, do you think we should sign this after budget discussion? Is this for year 22, or is it just five?
I think you should sign it now, because I think it needs to be into the state before budget deliberations would be finished. And we typically do sign it before budget deliberations.
Any other comments, Commissioner Tab?
Yeah, I'm, I'm good, thank you.
This is just the application, so it doesn't commit us to, you know.
I'm going to guide the commission, authorizes the president's act on behalf to enter contractual agreement with the Division of Justice and Administrative Services to receive and administer grant funds pursuant to provisions of the county, or community corrections program. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye. Opposed, motion passes.
On the blue tab, sir, for your signature, and the county clerk is the pink signature.
Okay. Yeah, I'll sign it real quick. Anybody want a five-minute break while I sign this? We'll take a five-minute break, and we'll leave it at that, I can figure out what time it actually is.
Is that all you men?
All right, we're back from our briefing. Is Laura online, Director of County Maintenance Department?
She is.
So this is agenda item number five. Laura Cohen, Intern Director, Jefferson County Maintenance Department, request for approval of employment full-time custodian. Laura, can you hear us? I can see you, actually.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yeah, we're good. How are you doing?
Okay, so I got the heads up back in December that one of my custodians was moving over to 911 to begin training as a dispatcher. She has left us officially this week. So that leaves me with three custodians to clean and disinfect 17 county buildings. And that, that's a lot of buildings. We have our Bardane campus, which is, all the buildings out here, four buildings that are in town, the whole block, Hunter House to Courthouse, Judicial Building, prosecutors, the jail annex, and also outlined buildings, which would be Parks and Rec, Animal Control, and the JCESA. So it's, it's really three people is not adequate coverage to clean all those buildings. And also, when I have a custodian out, I have to pull from our maintenance staff to have them cover, because certain things like pulling trash every day, or checking restrooms, has to be done on daily basis. So not only does it pull me short on the custodial side, but as far as what we provide on the maintenance side of our department. So I'm requesting the approval of Pamela Gatz as a full-time employee. This is a grade two, 80-hour employee at $31,559. Mrs., Mrs. Gatz comes to us from Aramark at NCTC, where her training was very similar to what we do here. So I think she'll fit in real quickly. She knows her business about cleaning, so she should be able to pick up very quickly. So I'm here to ask approval of her employment.
That start date, ma'am?
I would like her to start Monday. She's available now, she, they laid off at NCTC due to COVID, so she's available to start Monday.
Okay.
Just quick, just, these are very important positions, especially during COVID. So I think it's absolutely needed, and it sounds budget neutral also. But that's my, Commissioner Tab, I see you're here.
Yeah, I was just ready to make the motion. All right, I move to approve the employment of Pamela Gatz as full-time 80-hour custodian in the maintenance department, and agreed to, and starting at a salary of $31,559. To start date would be Monday, February 8.
I'll second that. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Roger's a little. We're just in time.
I'm suffering from severe shoulder pain.
Roger, you might be going over one thing real quick. Can you get yourself activated over there? Let's jump to new business, the last bullet point on page three, update on Jefferson County Legislative Summit. So that is occurring this afternoon at 3:30, virtually.
Well, in person and virtual. If I gave them the virtual option, and Delegate Espinoza indicated he may be in person or virtual, depending upon how his schedule works out. Senator Rucker is in person. But you can do either, either, or be in here, you can appear virtually or not.
Okay, I mean, I'll be here in person, but it will be broadcast either way.
That's correct, yes, it will be. Yeah, just using this format here, but it's a different log on, we created a separate session for it, but yeah.
Okay, so it's occurring at 3:30. Any brief comments from commissioners on this? I know the administrator talked about the Airbnb thing you want to bring up, and one other thing, 911, or?
It's Parks and Rec. And I can give you an overview of that if you want. So our Parks and Rec offer summer camps that really are for childcare, for people who don't need childcare all year, just when school's not in season. It's an affordable form of childcare. However, and I believe that the legislature had attempted to exempt organizations like Parks and Rec from the regulations. But then DHHR wrote the regulations, and the definition doesn't exempt Parks and Rec. And the problem is, it requires us to, it would require Parks and Rec to make a lot of modifications that are not only expensive, but would also ruin our parks in order to offer those summer camps. So some of them are offered out at San Michael, some of them are offered throughout, they have several locations throughout the county. So they just want to be exempt the way that the code section contemplates. We tried to do this last year, but it was later in the legislative session when we realized that DHHR was trying to enforce those regulations on us. So we, we weren't able to get legislation through. So it's basically to allow Parks and Rec to continue to have those summer camps without having to comply with the, the regulations of DHHR, which, again, I believe that the legislature attempted to exempt them a couple of years ago with a legislative change. But then, the code of state rules kind of negated that change. But the legislature also approves the code of state rule, they have the force of law. So, you know, it didn't end up accepting them.
Parks and Rec has already been suffering through the COVID stuff, this is the last thing they need to be dealing with also.
And also parents, there are a lot of parents who rely on the summer camps for summer childcare. And I, I already drafted a change to the rules, minor change, which is exempt them out.
Let's bring that up first, but then we'll get here. And the second thing, just the Airbnb tax.
So this Airbnb, currently Airbnb is not charged, and this has been going on for several years. Last year, we did get legislation passed, but the governor vetoed it. I think he was not happy with the state being the collection, the, for, being the collection point. So just really quickly, the Airbnb is not charging the hotel motel tax to people who are booking through Airbnb, they don't collect it. It's on the host to collect it, and we have no way to enforce that, because we don't know who's renting out an Airbnb or not. It's paid, of course, by people who are traveling here, who we provide services to, like, you know, fire, EMS, police. The other thing is, is that, that, that tax in large part funds the CVB, who is marketing this area. So the Airbnb is directly benefiting from that tax, because you don't want to book an Airbnb or a hotel if you don't want to travel to a particular place. So it's been ongoing for a while, there were people who opposed the legislation for a while, and then it, like I said, it passed last year, was vetoed by the governor, so they have a slightly different bill. Annette Gavin will also be present, if you'd like to have her speak about that, and she's the director of the CVB. So, you know, and it's also a fairness issue for hotels versus Airbnb. The hotels are paying it, Airbnb people are not. And it is, it is already due under the statute, so they, they already should be paying it. It's just that Airbnb is not collecting it.
So yeah, obviously, if you're an existing resident, you're probably not using Airbnb in the county unless you have some other problems going on. So, any other quick comments on that, or?
I'll wait for this afternoon. I do have some questions, but, okay.
All right, so we'll have that set at 3:30, and you can tune in remotely. All right, so Roger, you ready to go?
Yeah.
A little early.
I just wanted to let you know, I'm, I'm suffering from shoulder pain pretty bad, and I'm going to try to do this sitting down. I may have to stand, but that's fine, no problems for me.
I heard your discussion about permits and complaints and so forth, and I just, this is just one. On the back of our business cards, we give everyone the phone numbers that they need for contact in our office. And if there's a complaint, the number at the top is the one that gets them to the person in our office who works to resolve the complaint, or explain why they've got to do what they got to do. We occasionally get complaints. The nature of most of them is it's somebody who just doesn't want to get a permit, they're going to do whatever the heck they feel like. And, can I take this off? Okay, and we have permit applications, and I can provide copies of those that are detailed as to what all the requirements are, who they, what permits they have to get from health departments, and which permits from Department of Highways, and, and all that explains everything they have to give us. I mean, we've tried to make it as easy as possible for them to understand what the requirements are in our permitting processes.
Sometimes this is the individual that's not realizing what they need to be doing. Nothing against the engineer department or anything, you guys did a great job. It's good that they're getting this, I wasn't even familiar with them getting all this information. So I just hope they're not circumventing all these numbers and trying to go to the top for no reason, so.
We also have an explanation of each, each office in our department and what they do, so they can try to figure out who they should be talking to, and who the contact information is, and emails and so forth. So all that's, all that's posted there. You, you had mentioned an issue with the sign, and I don't know if this is it, but Mr. Carter, the code enforcement officer, had gone to the magistrate court this morning on a case where a restaurant with a sign refused to come in and get a permit, they were putting up a new sign, and it falls under the zoning ordinance, and they refused to do it, and he took them to court, and the magistrate ruled that they need to get in compliance, so they're going to get fined. And the guy admitted that he knew that he needed to get a permit, he just put it off. And under zoning, signs have to have a certain setback, you know, from the, from the right-of-way or the lot line. Zoning believes that this sign may actually be located in the DOH right-of-way, which isn't even big. And it's an issue for DOH, but those are the things we deal with, and people get mad when they don't hear what they like to hear, and then they just start complaining, so.
It wasn't that sign, it really was no sign, they just used it as.
Okay, okay. So, and we work to get people in compliance. We'll tell them what they need to do, we'll hold them by the hand, help them out. There are people who refuse to do it, and when they get to that point, and we believe strongly that we are correct in what the ordinances say, we take them to magistrate court, and we don't like doing that, but we will, and Mr. Carter's done that over the years, and he's had about 60 cases, and, how many?
Seven.
Okay, and he's won every single one. So we don't take people over there just to make their life. So we don't take people over there just to make their life difficult. We don't go unless we're certain that they have to do what we're telling them they have to do.
I guess, could there be amendments to zoning to mitigate something like that? I mean, you won seventy, I mean, how many businesses were not built up of those seventy, is my question. Did that affect the actual building of or starting of that business? Not just the sign, but many other issues, zoning specific. We, we don't have that conversation here, it's not really on the agenda.
Yeah.
We can have that at a later time.
Yeah.
But I just want to, that was the initial discussion, just to make it easier and see if we can do anything at the county to empower inspectors and new business owners to help each other, so.
Right.
So we'll jump here, so agenda number six, complete bond release, request Family Adventure Resort LLC, River Riders, Clarion and Trail Connector Roads.
Correct. Okay, the first one is a complete release of the remaining seventy-two thousand dollars from the construction bond amount for Family Adventure Resort LLC, River Riders slash Clarion Inn, Connector Roads. Planning Commission file number S seventeen dash zero four. This project's located on the south side of Route three forty on All Stats Hill Road near the Clarion Hotel. The work appears to be one hundred percent complete.
All right, so I move, we authorize complete release of performance bond number one zero seven two zero zero two nine five with Travelers, Paddle and Surety Company of America, in the amount of seventy-two thousand sixty-five dollars construction bond amount for Family Adventure Resort LLC, River Riders, Clarion Inn, Connector Roads, file number S seventeen dash oh four. Second, any discussion? In favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, all right.
Next one's a complete release of the remaining one hundred and seventy thousand nine hundred and forty dollars from the construction bond amount for Blossman Gas Incorporated, Burr Business Park Lot Twelve, file number nineteen dash one dash S. This project's located at two sixty-four War Admiral Boulevard within the Burr Business Park. The work appears to be one hundred percent complete.
Yeah, I'll make the motion to authorize the complete release of the performance bond number nine-two-four-two-six-nine-one with Fidelity Deposit Company of Maryland in the amount of one hundred and seventy thousand nine hundred and forty dollars. Construction bond amount for Blossman Gas Incorporated, Burr Business Park Lot Twelve, file number nineteen dash one dash S.
Second, any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Next is a presentation of calendar year 2020 annual report for the Office of Impact Fees.
Pursuant to Jefferson County Impact Fee Procedures Ordinance Section six point eight one, at least one every year, not later than January thirty-first of each year, beginning in the year two thousand and five, and prior to County Commission's adoption of the Annual Budget and Capital Improvements Program, the impact fee coordinator designated, chosen by the impact fee coordinator, shall coordinate the preparation and submission of an annual report to the county executive and the county commission. So, impact fees. And we should, we submit the annual report to the county commission, who, who shall receive the annual report and which may take such, such actions as they deem appropriate, including but not limited to requesting additional data or analyses, holding public workshops, and public hearings. And the impact fees annual report for calendar year 2020 was attached, and in your packet. The annual report is essentially, it's a, it's documentation, a record of what occurred with impact fees in that calendar year that just passed. So I'm going to go through this and hit on the key points. If you need, have a question, just stop me. Trends in, in fee collection, permitting for new residential construction in Jefferson County, calendar year twenty twenty increased relative to calendar year two thousand and nineteen. There were six hundred and one impact fee applications processed in twenty twenty versus two hundred and twenty-five in nineteen. Permitting for new commercial construction in Jefferson County in twenty twenty decreased relative to nineteen. There were ten impact fee applications processed in twenty twenty versus twenty-two in calendar year nineteen. And table one A shows the breakdown for each year of the types of residential applications that were processed. And then table one B shows the non-residential or commercial building permits that were processed each year. And then the accounting of fees collected to date is based on a calendar year, since this report is due to the commission in January of each year. Those these values reported below span fiscal years two thousand and nineteen and twenty twenty. Table two presents the total fee collection data. Well, three and four present the financial data categorized into county and municipal districts. So in table two, you'll see the breakdown for residential and commercial, how, how much revenue was collected for single-family townhomes, duplex, multifamily, and then each type of commercial category, and the total for both is two million six hundred and thirteen thousand and two dollars. And then in table three, in the county tax districts, you have in Charles Town, three hundred and six thousand and thirty dollars was collected, Harpers Ferry, one hundred and seventy-three thousand five hundred and forty-six dollars, Cable Town, one hundred and eighty-four thousand eight hundred and thirty-two dollars, Middleway, one hundred and seventy-one thousand seven hundred and seven dollars, and Shepherdstown, one hundred and ninety-one thousand eight hundred and thirty-one dollars, for a total of one million twenty-seven thousand nine hundred and forty-six dollars. Then you look at the municipal tax districts in table four, and you have the Charles Town Corporation, impact fees collected was six hundred and thirty-seven thousand, Harpers Ferry, six thousand five hundred and twenty-four, Rancin Corporation, nine hundred and eight thousand eight hundred and ninety-five, and Shepherdstown Corporation, thirty-one thousand six hundred and ninety-seven. And the thing to note there is that in the municipalities, most of the new development is occurring in the Rancin Corporation. So you come down to the bottom of the table, you had a million and twenty-seven thousand was in the county districts, and one million five hundred and eighty-five thousand in the municipal districts. So slightly more than half of the development and growth and the impact fees generated is, is from the municipalities versus outside the municipalities.
Rancin, the mini driver, that is probably Stanley Park, those around home depot area and all that, most likely, and some other areas. But that's a large chunk of building right there.
Yeah.
Perpless six dollars, I mean, I think we saw the previous chart on table two, the commercial was forty-three dollars for the whole year. I mean, granted, growth hasn't been substantial across for commercial anyways, but we're talking about like zero dollars here, so.
That's because it was reduced like in two thousand and twelve to half a percent of what it should be as trying to see if it would spur economic growth. The only data we have is the number of applications, and they're up and down, and there's not some significant increase. So where we stand in impact fees, we can't make a correlation between the two. But it was done at the request of Development Authority at that time, when John Risin-Webber was the director.
And I mean, I realize we have impact fees in Berkeley County, does it? Berkeley County is growing substantially as part of businesses, they have eighty-one. Also, I mean, Berkeley County is not dealing with people fighting every single business that wants to come to Jefferson County either. So I mean, there's a, this, this all ties into taxes, impact fees, schools, parks and rec, and so forth. I mean, I understand nothing is perfect in life, but when you consistently fight every single project, no matter what it is, from one end to the other end of the spectrum, you're looking at these numbers, that's what you see, and that goes straight back to the community.
If I can speak freely, I, I want to make one point on that. Back in, impact fees, I think were first adopted around two thousand and four, two thousand and five. I can remember being in planning commission meetings at that time where essentially development was being protested, new development, new growth. One big argument they used was the overcrowding of schools, and how can you approve new development when the schools have so many more people? And then impact fees came in, and I, I didn't take it over till later. So they adopted impact fees, a lot of that money went to the schools, they used it as match to get school building authority bonds, and they start building schools. And that problem's gone away, and from where I sit, that argument's pretty much gone away. But that, that's the history behind one of the drivers for impact fees and the issues that existed.
I mean, I, I would be all for looking at redoing the commercial impact fees. The problem is, is if I'm a CEO of a business, I'm looking at Jefferson County, or I'm looking at Berkeley County, I'm probably not going to go to Jefferson County because of what's been going on in Jefferson County. I mean, am I going to ask the question, am I just going to get lawsuits out the wazoo for months? Or do I go to Berkeley County, can build it almost immediately, and we're good to go? I mean, this is real stuff here, people, and I'll be frank, I mean, I'll speak, I'll speak very freely here. I'm like, you want to fight something from the far end of Rockwell and then to a solar farm? You're across the entire spectrum of everything. Who's going to come to Jefferson County? Who is going to want to deal with that community and all the backlash? If you're on fighting both ends of the spectrum. I mean, certainly not me as a CEO, and that is jobs, that's money for schools, parks and rec, and so forth. So, I mean, you want to continue on and do that, that's fine, it, it's going to hurt the county long term. So I'm frankly sick and tired of it, and you can quote me on it. I'm seriously, I mean, seriously, keep it up, keep it where you're at in ten years, fighting everything, so.
This is, I'd like to make a comment, please. My cat's just helping me too, so I got to get her out of the way. I, I, what Roger said was pretty accurate on part of the impetus around the schools. School board was actually told they would not get the funding for a new high school if we did not have impact fees. They were told that from the state, so it was a pretty critical time, and, you know, the schools were really in dire straits. We have different issues now. But I do think, you know, you're trying, Commissioner Compton has kind of compared us to Berkeley County. Well, first of all, all our land is more expensive than Berkeley County, you can go there, and they don't have, you know, they don't have planning and zoning, and they're just gotten caught up with their stormwater issues, and, you know, there, there's, it's, you're not comparing apples to apples, it's apples to oranges. Berkeley County's got Route eighty-one, we don't. We're a little closer to DC, I won't say the roads are any better either way, but our property has more value than it does in Berkeley County. So there's pluses and minuses on both sides of the equation.
Any other further commissioners have any chime in on that? All right, go ahead, Roger.
Okay, table five on page nine provides the impact fee program specialist accounting of each of the impact fee general accounts. So it's, you know, it's the starting balance plus the deposits, minus the checks for expenditures, plus the interest, and you get the balance. Table six is the impact fee holding accounts, what they started out with in January twenty twenty, and what they ended up with. So right now for schools, you have six million four hundred and ninety-nine thousand in their account. Law enforcement, which is the sheriff, you have one hundred and seventy-five thousand one hundred and forty.
Parks and Rec.
You have three hundred and seventy-eight thousand two hundred and twenty-five dollars. And EMS, you have five thousand five hundred and twenty-seven dollars. Fees are dispersed from the long-term accounts for only two reasons. It's either a requisition for an expenditure for an approved item, capital improvement, or a refund, somebody withdraws their application. And the transactions for all the fee disbursements are presented in table eight. And the fee projects approved by the impact fee program specialist for fiscal year twenty twenty-one, along with the approved funding amounts are in table seven. So in table seven, this is what was approved last year. Schools was looking at a regional student support center, asking for a million dollars, law enforcement weapons training range, an expansion of the temporary sheriff's office space, a hundred thousand, twenty-five thousand for the range, Parks and Rec land acquisition, two hundred thousand, James Height Park Playground, fifty thousand dollars for that playground equipment, and then the EMS, twenty thousand dollars towards their building mortgage. So in table eight, you will see that the actual requisitions that were requested were by Parks and Rec. They asked for fifty thousand dollars towards the James Height Park Playground. And if you skip to the next page, EMS asked for fifteen thousand dollars towards their paying their building mortgage. The rest of the payments here are what we charged each entity for the cost of the current study that's ongoing. So those were, so that, so as far as actual capital improvements, those were the only two that actually ended up, we ended up getting requests for payment. And then I'll take up the new capital improvement plan next. As annual review of the impact fee program, there are no proposed changes to any impact fee ordinances by us at this time. Two thousand and thirteen, the county commission adopted ordinance number two thousand and thirteen dash one, which amended the law enforcement ordinance number two zero zero five dash one, and EMS ordinance number two zero zero five dash three, reducing the commercial impact fee by ninety-nine and a half percent of the actual impact fee calculation for new commercial development. And at the July second, two thousand and fifteen county commission meeting, John Risin-Webber, the executive director of the Development Authority, presented a report to the county commission. And at that point, Commissioner Jane Tab made a motion to request that Jefferson County Development Authority complete an updated report on the data regarding the commercial impact fee rates until all impact fees, and that we continue with the current reduced commercial impact fee rates until all impact fees are ready to be reviewed or as needed. There's been, been those follow-up with that from J C D A as far as whether there's been benefit to that or not, and so we've continued on under that same half a percent commercial impact fee, and discuss that at some point if you want to. The impact fees procedure ordinance was last amended on November twelfth, two thousand and twelve to provide for the Affordable Housing Discount. The discounts required under state code, which has, was enacted during the calendar year two thousand and eleven legislative session. It says there were no amendments to the impact fee procedures ordinance in twenty twenty, however, we did have an amendment, and it was in this pack that I sent you on the chronology of the adoption of impact fees. And we'll need to make a correction to this report if you accept it, would be accepted with the correction. Figures that in two thousand and nineteen, the county commission made an amendment to the Affordable Housing Discount, which lowered the affordable housing discount was lowered by the county commission from sixty percent to forty percent of the value of the average housing index figure for apartments. We lowered that. I would need to add that to this report in that section, make a correction. And I'll let you know, Michelle and I go through these two and three times, line by line, and think we've caught everything, but apparently we missed that. Falling projects will appear in the FY twenty-two Jefferson County Capital Improvement Plan, and that's in table nine. You have schools, once again, regional student support center, law enforcement, the same weapons training range, and expansion of sheriff's office, Parks and Rec, land acquisition, and Sam Michaels Park Amphitheater, and EMS payment on the building mortgage, and I'll get into those in the capital improvement plan.
This looks like the last year, paying money for the building mortgage at PSA, now the county's going to have to take the whole tab.
You know, you've been paying part of it for several years, and You know, you've been paying part of it for several years. And I think I mentioned in the capital improvement plan, I think the numbers, they're averaging about $10,000 a year in impact fees for EMS. So, the mortgage is $81,000 a year. So, somehow they're making up that 71,000. They have been for the past several years. I take it it's in their budget. That's true. It's getting smaller and smaller. Proposed fee boundary districts. Presently, the only fee category which utilizes a fee district is law enforcement. What that means is that because Ranson, Shepherdstown, Harpers Ferry, all municipalities have their own law enforcement, we don't collect the law enforcement portion of the impact fee in those municipalities for development that occurs there. It's only out in the county. Those fee schedule changes, the county commission recalculated the fees beginning in 2014 and adopted new fee schedules, which became effective in 2015. A recalculation study began in calendar year, calendar year 2020 is currently nearing completion. So, that's where we are with that. So, the last time the fees were adjusted was in 2015. Inflation adjustments. In accordance with the impact fee procedure ordinance 2003-1, Section 6B, the annual inflation adjustment will be applied automatically on April 1, 2021 unless the county commission asks to stay these adjustments. And staff says that considering that a recalculation study is currently ongoing, staff recommends staying the inflationary adjustment. Because you get that, if you, if you take action as a result of the recalculation study, you're getting that built in with that study. It takes into account. West Virginia Code 7-20 requires that the county maintain as part of its capital improvement program level of service standards for impact fee applicable categories. The level of service standards for the categories of schools, law enforcement, parks and recreation, EMS, were last updated and adopted in April 2015. The level of service standards, standards will be updated again as the, as of the 2020 impact fee recalculation study. They will set what the current levels of service are. They'll establish that, what's currently being provided. On the inflationary adjustment, Table 13 on Page 18, using the inflationary factors that were required to use, it outlines the last column on the right, the inflation adjustment factors. So, the inflation adjustment for schools would be like 5.9%, law and EMS 4.3%, and parks 4.3%. That's what would happen automatically April 1, unless you move to stay that. So, if you go to Page 19, Table 14, the increase as a result of those inflationary adjustments for residential development are shown in the right-hand column. And you can see that the residential impact fees would increase about $350 to $400 on three of them. Multi-family would go up $250.
Can we act on that inflation adjustment today or this thing? Is that the accepted?
It should be in the motions to act on it today.
Typically, when you accept the report, you accept, you act on the inflationary adjustment.
Table 15 shows the inflation adjustment for law enforcement and commercial development, commercial industrial development only pays the law enforcement and the EMS impact fee. So, we're showing you the table breakdown of what it would be for law enforcement, where we also include commercial development. So, the column on the right shows what the difference would be. And these figures for commercial are per thousand square feet of floor area. And you can see that those run anywhere from, an increase from $1.73 per thousand square. $13 per thousand square feet. So, 10,000 square foot business, if it's a commercial shopping center, would see $130 increase. Parks and Recreation, the same thing, Table 16, your commercial going anywhere from $1.14 up to a little over $4. Moving on. On Page 22, residential fee totals inflation adjusted. The fee schedule listed in Table 18 will apply on April 1. This fee schedule is based on the schedule resulting from the fee recalculations of 2015. Considering that the impact fee recalculation is currently ongoing, we're recommending that you stay the inflationary adjustment. But this shows in Table 18 what the current impact fee is in the middle column, and then what the impact fee would be if you adopt the inflationary adjustment. And that's the end of my report. And.
I'll move to accept the calendar year 2020 impact fees annual report for the Office of Impact Fees that's presented. Any discussion on this? Any further discussion on this for Mr. Goodman?
Yes, I have a question. My question is, Roger, this is, your whole report is based on current impact fees, not on the new recalculation study, correct?
Correct. It's what occurred in calendar year 2020, which is under the current impact fees.
Okay. I just want to make that clear for myself and for the public, because I have questions about the recalculation studies, but that's not part of today.
That is correct.
Okay. And just another question, I've, I've had a couple of comments, and I know we adjusted it, but I don't know if it's working on the affordable housing discount. You may not have enough data yet to tell if it's being effective or not. But, you know, that came up with us working on the homeless problem. That was part of the discussion of affordable housing issues.
The reason we lowered the threshold is because of the belief that the apartment complexes, the nature of those apartment complexes that were qualifying for affordable housing were not believed to be affordable housing as everyone sees it. I think the rents were running $1,400 to $1,700 a month. They had a community center, swimming pool, dog park, and a belief that affordable housing would not contain such luxuries. And as a result, the rent would be lower and truly more affordable. If I'm mistaken.
I think that's really accurate. They were just working the system, Commissioner Tab, and getting a break for not really doing affordable housing.
Right. Well, no, I know. I just want to know if we are doing enough to promote affordable housing. And since we changed it, did Roger have any data, and it may be too soon to tell, if more, more developers are taking advantage of the affordable housing discount and building to, to fill that need? That's, that's my question. Maybe I wasn't clear.
What we get are individuals who apply for the affordable housing discount. And we have people who qualify. And a threshold for qualifying for that is at 60% of the housing index value. And people qualify for that. We don't have, you might say, mansions qualifying, which is the intent of the affordable housing discount is to have affordable housing. The, we lowered the apartments to 40%. And that number at that time, based on the appraisals we had on those units, would set, was where it needed to be set in order that they wouldn't qualify, qualified.
Okay.
We did have come in under the affordable housing index this year. A, one of the, one of the apartment units that qualified prior brought in a new section, so I think it was 90-some units, 30-some units. And then we had a new apartment complex that's going over by Washington High School that's about 254 units. And they both would not qualify right now, is the way the ordinance is written. But there, the total's about 309 units got in under the affordable housing discount.
Quick thing on that. What stops them from getting in on the affordable housing only to then jack up the rents a year or two down the line? Is that like a threshold where you get in, do it this long, and then five years later, we're doubled that?
We don't get into the rents. I think the way you would control it is you want to set the threshold where what they build is, you might say, in a sense, a smaller unit, a more affordable unit. So, with single family, I always use the example of, if your affordable housing for single family would be, you know, the, maybe the two or three bedroom, one-and-a-half bath rancher, maybe with a carport on a slab or a crawl space. It's not, you know, a large house. That, to me, that's affordable housing. What was your question again?
As far as the rent, it doesn't directly get down to that level. That's fine.
So, what I was going to say to that?
Yeah, just, well, in all fact, funnel up into, that's why you came to the question.
So, what I want to say to that, though, is that under, with single family, and we have in the ordinance, if somebody comes in and builds a thousand-square-foot house, and then they walk in two years later and they submit a building permit, and they want to put a 3,000-square-foot addition on it, we have a provision, a provision, I think it's a five-year look back, that if you did that, we're going, you would have had to have paid, if you built it all at once, the full impact fee. So, we have a five-year look back that says if you do that, and you game the system, we will do a look back, and you will pay the difference between what you paid under affordable housing and what the full amount is you will owe it at that time on that addition, because you should have paid it to begin with.
Five years seems pretty short to me for that. I don't know, but we can talk about it later.
Okay. So, we can change the ordinance to whatever you want. We just administer what we got.
We did have a builder who did do that. Not, not to that extreme, but the assessor caught it, because the assessor reviews the plans to determine if they're affordable. And then when they went out to pick up the new house, they noticed that the plans were different.
Yes, we had a builder who went out and submitted, submitted plans that qualified for affordable housing discount. And then they went and finished off the basement, put the decks on there. They went back to Ranson, to their building permit department, and changed the plans after they qualified for us. And the assessor goes in to assess it and says, this isn't what, doesn't match the plans we looked at. It's more than that. So, then they tell us, and she tells us whether or not it would have qualified, and then we, we made them pay the difference.
All right.
People game the system sometimes.
Any other further comments on that? We should have anybody else?
Yeah, it's, just one more comment. Thank you for explaining, you know, your thoughts, Roger, on the annual inflationary adjustments, that if we adopt fees based on the new study, that would probably take care of that. But I'm a little concerned, and I know it's just, you know, this COVID situation, is that the price of building has gone up so much. You know, I don't even think the numbers were in for what the study were based on. So, we may have to look at that again, just to make sure we're covering the costs. But we don't know how that long this, if this is just a blip, and everything will even out after a year, or it's going to go on, continue. So, that's just one concern I have. And of course, I don't have an answer on how to work with it right now.
That's for going forward. I mean, this motion on the table here is regarding accepting the 2020 impact fee annual report. That's going forward issue.
You're correct on that. I just wanted to bring it up while it was on my mind, and put it in Roger's mind, too.
All right. So, any further discussion on this motion? All those in favor, say aye. Okay. Next, is there a motion to approve or stay the annual inflationary adjustment? I need just to, to save it. Any discussion on that? The motion was to stay the annual inflationary adjustment to the impact fees. Hearing no discussion, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passed unanimously. So, Roger, you're up to what? Are you good?
I'm glad.
Okay, all right. You got a lot of things there.
I just want to say thank, thank you to Roger for always a complete and detailed report, almost more information than I can process, but I know I can go back and find the answers. So, thank you very much, Roger.
Okay, the next report I have is the fiscal year 2022 Capital Improvement Plan for the Office of Impact Fees pursuant to West Virginia State Code, Chapter 7, Article 20, Section 6, Subsection 726. Counties which have enabled impact fees must maintain an impact fee capital, impact fee program capital improvement plan. Requirement for yearly impact fee program capital improvement plan and the identification of impact fee fundable projects is outlined in the Jefferson County Impact Fee Procedures Ordinance 2003-1, Section 3C. Several impact fee funded projects submitted for FY22 will require additional funding from other sources. The mortgage payment for EMS headquarters facility require partial payment from the department budget. The proposed sheriff's department internal expansion project will be partially funded with grant funds that, that the sheriff's department is obtaining. Parks and Recreation's land purchase will be partially funded with already obtained grant funds. And the school board's regional student support center will be partially funded with funds from other sources that are available to them, or all of which I believe is probably tied to the school bond that they got approved. So... This document constitutes the Jefferson County Impact Fee Program Capital Improvement Plan for fiscal year 2022, which begins July 1, 2021. It consists of two categories, those eligible for impact fee funding for capital improvements, and those ineligible. For the entities eligible for impact fee funding, they are indicated below, and that's the Jefferson County Board of Education, the sheriff of Jefferson County, that's law enforcement, Jefferson County Parks and Recreation Commission, and Jefferson County Emergency Services Agency. The total funding request for all projects over the upcoming fiscal year, as well as the next five outlying years, is $140,842,828, which is down from the $142,828 they had in fiscal year 2021. Of this amount, $36,276,000 represents the funding request for fiscal year, fiscal year 2020. Capital Improvement Plan. The divided sections which follow include the CIP Form 1, CIP Form 2, and they're all in the back in the appendix. And those are the forms that Michelle has them fill out, each entity of what their capital improvement plans are, how much they cost, description of them, and so forth. And so, CIP Form 2 documents the annual and five-year project request and justification, which details each project listed on the entity's CIP Form 1. And projects submitted for FY2022 do not require funding from the county's general fund or capital outlay fund. On the Page 3, the overview of funding options. This document lists the Jefferson County Impact Fee Program, of which some entities have several options for funding available to them. In general, revenues available to fund capital projects may be classed into one of the following categories. So, county support, that would be via your general fund or your coal severance funds, et cetera. county support, that would be via your general fund or your coal severance funds, et cetera. General obligation and construction bonds, and, um, currently one such bond is in effect for taxpayers Jefferson County. That's a school construction bond. Loans mediated through banks to the all into this category. You have state support, which is usually school building authority grants, uh, and similar grants to other state agencies, federal grants, impact fees, entity-specific user fees, such as those fees that Parks and Recreation use, or fire and ambulance fees, and then donations and gifts. I'm going to discuss direct county support. County Commission has the authority to use monies from the general or coal severance fund to assist with the funding of county projects. In prior years, these funds have been used to build the San Michaels Park Community Center and to purchase and renovate several buildings, uh, which would include the emergency communications center, sheriff's department, the county maintenance facility, which are all located in the Bardane Industrial Park. And then you had the old jail was renovated for the circuit court. And, um, most recently, the purchase and renovation of the gray building, which now houses the prosecuting attorney's office. These funds have also assisted with the mortgage payments for the new emergency services agency building. You have general obligation and construction bonds, and only the county commission and the board of education may propose special levies to fund capital projects. The board of education has floated several construction bonds which have funded expansion or renovation projects at Jefferson High School and part of the construction costs at Washington High School. The county commission through its building commission may borrow money from any type of lending, financial institution, or issue general obligation bonds. State support, the only significant source of state-supplied capital funding for the county comes from the state school building authority. The SBA has responded favorably about providing monies for several construction and school expansion projects. No other entity, including the county commission, has an equivalent state funding agent. Federal support, unfortunately, federal monies have not been a predictable or reliable revenue stream to fund capital projects within Jefferson County. The sheriff's department has in the past received some federal monies for capital projects, but historically the funding amounts have been relatively small and random in nature. Federal monies are also available to fund capital projects for EMS entities. I think their, uh, headquarters out there was funded through, uh, like an agricultural department loan or grant. Summary of the impact fee fundable projects. Table 1 lists all the, each entity's ones that they consider urgent or mandatory. And not all these projects are eligible for funding by impact fee. So they're just listing all their projects. Then we determine whether any part of them are, can, uh, we can spend impact fee funding on them. Table 2 is all urgent and non-urgent capital improvement projects. This is essentially each entity's overall wish list. And then Table 3 identifies only those projects that are impact fee fundable. And then we, we focus on expenditures on projects that are, uh, priority one projects first when we're looking at what we're going to spend the money on. Table 1 on page 5 is your priority one projects, and you would see here that Jefferson County Board of Education has priority one projects and emergency services has priority one projects.
For time purposes, Roger, I mean, do any commissioners have any specific questions? Could we receive this prior? As far, you can see the priority one, priority two. Are there any specific questions to that chart or that summary after reviewing it previously? I don't want to cut you short. I just.
Nah, I'll stop anytime you want to stop.
I mean, this, this table 2 is essentially the summary of priority one, priority two, and priority one is the most important and so forth.
And, and you would see that, uh, Parks and Rec and law enforcement submitted no priority one projects. So then Table 2 is, is everything. It's each entity's wish list of, um, what they would like to have. Table 3 is the impact fee fundable projects. So I'm going to go through these because this is where we made it of what to fund. So with the Jefferson County Board of Education, um, their current request is for a million dollars on the regional student support center. They say they have $9 million from other sources, and then they're going to be looking for 1.1 million in 2023 and then a million in 2024, 2025, 2026. So our take on that is, is as of January 21, the remaining allocation amounts to $57,755 in the elementary school and land category for this project. As of January 1, 2021, allocation is $516,285 in the middle schools and high schools land, schools and land capital category for this project for a combined amount of $7,574,040. This request is fundable up to this limit in combination and in combination with other projects under this capital category and contingent upon availability of funds in the school's impact fee account, which is projected to have an estimated balance of $8,476,858 on July 1, 2021, when this CIP takes effect. So, um, we're looking at 1, 2, 3, 4. We're looking at about $5.1 million. Is the commitment that we're making out of impact fees towards that project. So full funding is currently available in the school's account for this $1 million request in FY 2022. Requisitions will be allocated 50% towards elementary school and land and 50% towards middle and high school capital categories. The capital improvement plan, impact fees funding request through FY '26 is currently available also. So we're saying that, um, the money's there for that.
So before, are you assuming that the impact fees have been raised at this estimate, or like for year 1, 2, 3, 4 out to 2025? Is that under the assumption of existing impact fees or raising them?
It's, it's under existing impact fees. And, um, we do a projection from January 1 of 2021 through June 30th of 2021 of how much we, additional we think will come in. And we run this spreadsheet of revenue, less expenditures, and then we have the detailed expenditures and we break them down to the capital categories. And then we go on further to predict the, uh, the development and applications that we're receiving that six-month period, which is, we just say that, um, we expect it to mirror what happened in the prior year during that period. And then we break it down to each capital category for each entity, and we have what we, what we currently have and then where it will be, um, July 1, with funding. So, um, and it's all based on current impact fee amounts. Uh, the sheriff of Jefferson County, the weapons training qualifications range and the internal expansion of temporary sheriff's office space. They want 100,000, uh, estimated cost of 100,000 on the range. They're asking for 25,000 this year, and then in 2023 through 2025, they're asking for 25,000 each year for a total of 100,000. And the expansion, they're, they're currently asking for 30,000. 20,000, excuse me, I'm looking at the wrong line. And, uh, the total cost is 20,000. They're asking for 5,000 impact fees. They say they have $15,000 from another source or a grant. So that brings us to, on the weapons training qualifications range, boils down to full funding is currently available on the law enforcement account for this $25,000 request fiscal year 2022. The CIP impact fees funding request through fiscal year 2025 is currently available also, which would complete the funding request. They call funding for that. The internal expansion of sheriff's office, full funding is currently available on law enforcement account for this $5,000 request in FY which would complete the project as far as impact fees. The total cost is supplemented with $15,000 of funding from another source.
Roger, I have a question on what that is. Is that just rearranging the, within the building? But it says temporary, so I don't under, quite understand what that means.
They're rearranging, uh, the inside of the building and, uh, reconfiguring things and buying cubicles and so forth to make better use of the space. It's, the way we looked at it from impact fees is, you know, you put an addition on the side of the building, or can you reconfigure things to make it more efficient for your deputies and get, get all the deputies in there the way they need to be so they can do their job. So we treat it as if it's, uh, an expansion. I think it's temporary because it's just, it's five years or so until maybe someone can look at, uh, where, you know, what the sheriff decides whether he wants to do an expansion or do something somewhere else. So we, we were trying to work with them to justify spending impact fees on it.
Right. Well, for that explanation, because I can see, you know, um, rearranging things internally is, you know, somebody wanting to add on. So, uh, I can see where you're coming from. I just didn't understand the temporary part of it. Thank you.
Sure. So that brings us to Parks and Recreation on, uh, land acquisition. They have an estimated total of 700,000. They're asking for 250,000 from impact fees. They say they have 450,000 from another source. James Height Park Parking totals, estimated totals 120,000. They're asking for the full 120,000 from impact fees. San Michaels Park Amphitheater, um, ADA improvements, estimated totals 20,000. They're asking for 10,000 from impact fees. And then that would be it. On the land acquisition, I'm just going to jump down here. Full funding is currently available in the Parks and Rec impact fee account for this $250,000 request in fiscal year 2022. No additional funding request in fiscal years is indicated. This appears to be a one-time request for this project. Uh, the total cost is being supplemented with $450,000 of funding from other sources. James Height Park Parking, funding for this project's available in the Parks and Rec impact fee account for this $120,000 request in fiscal year 2022. No additional funding request in future fiscal years is indicated, and this appears to be a one-time request for the project. San Michaels Park Amphitheater ADA improvements, funding for this project is available in the Parks and Rec impact fee account for this $10,000 request in fiscal year 2022. No additional funding request in future fiscal indicated. This appears to be a one-time request for this project. Total cost is supplemented with $10,000 funding from prior allocation. Brings us to, uh, Emergency Services Agency. So the, uh, building mortgage, their current request was for $81,000, and they're asking for 81,000 in all the future years. And, um, the due to limited funds in EMS impact fee account, this request's approved for only $10,000 of funding in fiscal year 2022, not the full $81,000 request. A request for additional funding may be made as additionally EMS impact fee revenues collected during fiscal year 2022. However, at this time, funding for the $71,000 remainder of the fiscal year 2022, of the fiscal year 2022, $71,000 mortgage payment will need to come from another source. It also appears that there will be insufficient funding in future fiscal years to pay the $81,000 mortgage from impact fee funds. Since impact fees revenue for this entity is only averaging 10,000 per year, the entity will need to find another funding source. And, and they've, they've been paying it from some other source. I just don't know what it is. Yeah, so. So the, uh, only the projects listed within this capital improvement plan are eligible for funding by impact fees, either in whole or in part. And whether a project may be wholly or partially funded depends on whether the project's exclusively needed due to new growth or is only partially required due to, uh, conditions of new growth. And then determining that, uh, the process that Michelle goes through is, um, does the project represent expansion of an acknowledged capital category? And if the answer is yes, then the question becomes, is the requested project necessary not only because of new growth? And if the answer is yes, then it's fully impact fee fundable. And if it's no, it's, it's partially fundable. Cash flow analysis, the following four tables constitute the official cash flow analysis for each or impact fee categories. The revenue and expenditures data are cumulative from the beginning of the respective fee election start date through January 1, 2021. The projected balance runs to July 1, 2021, which is the end of fiscal year 2021, or fiscal year 2022. For the purposes of projecting the cash flow analysis from January, uh, 1, 2021 through June 30th, 2021, it was assumed that the county growth rate for that, that period will be constant and equal to the same time period last year. Which is actually was, we're assuming 107 single-family units, 40 townhouse units, 42 collection units. We included now multi-family units. Especially because, uh, it's kind of a, an outlier that 300 and some units came in last year. So we're being conservative. So while there were 11 commercial development projects in calendar year 2020, the amount of impact fees collected due to commercial development during that same time period was just $21, so we ignore that. The amount of commercial impact fees collected is insignificant. So we come to table four, and for schools, have all the revenue, uh, that was collected. We break it down into the capital categories. And, um, how that's done is you take your impact fee recalculation study, and they're, the entities are giving the consultant, basically what all their assets are, and they're placing a value on it, whether it's land, buildings, and you take, you break it down as to what portion that is of their total assets. So currently, uh, elementary school and land is 29.2% of the school's total assets. So we break it down that way into the capital categories. So for every dollar that, uh, would come in, 29.2 cents goes to elementary schools, 67.8 cents would go to high schools, and 3 cents would go to admin, shop, bus and garage. So we have to track it as it comes in, that it's, we're accounting for it in that way. So if they spend, they can't, they can't spend more than what they have in those capital categories. So they can't take money from elementary schools and spend it, uh, on bus garage. Okay? Because you're, you've, uh, made an agreement with the people that you're charging to impact fees to put it towards expanding those things that they put an impact on, those capital categories. So, um, we have the total amount that's been collected as of January 1, 2021 for schools, which was $6,498,000. The, uh, table right below that is our projection for the next six months using the same percent breakdown for capital categories. And we, and we're projecting that they would have $7,448,035 in their account on July 1. We moved the law enforcement. It's the same thing. So we're predicting that on June 30th, 2021, they'll have $201,340 in their account. For Parks and Rec, we're predicting on June 30th, 2021, they'll have 450,600 EMS, we're projecting that on June 30th, 2021, they'll have $12,946 in their account. So, uh, and that information's all used when we're deciding what the fund and what funds we think they'll have available when this capital improvement plan becomes effective. So that's the capital improvement plan, and we have a motion.
I'll make that move to approve the four-year 2022 capital improvement plan for the Office of Impact Fees that's presented. So, any discussion, Mr. Tab, anybody? All right, all those in favor of the motion, say hi. Thank you, Roger.
And I'll just state one other thing is, at some point, we probably need to have a workshop where we can come in and sit down with you and go over the comments that resulted in the public hearing on the impact fee recalculation of what issues and concerns you have and see what direction you want to go moving forward. I, I got a feel for the concerns and a feel for your issues about the accuracy of the report. I've got a simple way to get to where you want to go. I just need to know where you want to go. And I think that's why we just need to have a discussion and we can, we can get there and make it as painless as possible based on what's been done in the past.
I guess to that point, the budget is going to take a substantial amount of February. So it's probably going to be early March or late February before you can get into this.
Yeah, I need time to get with Michelle and get through the comments and see if we can kind of come up with answers to what the concerns were. And then what the themes were and then, but yeah, March. I, I'd like to push it out to March, even if it's late March.
That's fine.
There's no deadline we have to meet in, in finishing that thing up and adopting something by a certain time.
That's fine. We'll, we'll say late March then.
Okay.
Is that fine with everybody?
Thank you.
All right, so, all right, we're not too far left. Okay, so I guess we're going to jump down to County Administrator Reports. Update on 911 phone system.
That involves a contract negotiation. It's going to have to be done, or recommend to be done in executive session.
Can you do anything else on your report briefing?
Sure. Um, so the next one is also an executive session item. So then we'll move down to the extension.
All right, which is the family, family medical leave expansion and emergency leave. You had extended this through January 31, asking for numbers from Michelle to see what it would cost us to extend it through March. As of right now, there isn't additional funding. We're getting reimbursed for that for those expanded leaves through CARES Act. The state doesn't have any CARES Act money left. So we actually didn't receive a reimbursement in December because they were having. However, it looks like according to the payroll numbers for January, that we might be over the home for that, that expanded leave. So, so far in January, we expended about $2,000 providing that leave to our employees. If if COVID flares up again, Michelle estimated that we would see about $20,000 to $30,000 monthly administrative or authorized commitment. And she said she didn't have any heartburn about extending it through March. So right now, I haven't even received very many COVID leave forms. I think, you know, we had a lot of employees in November, December who needed to leave either because of an exposure or because they, they contracted COVID themselves. We don't have very many employees taking advantage of being expanded at the MALE option. And Jefferson County schools are back in person. I think Berkeley County has a hybrid where they're attending a couple days a week, but we still don't have very many employees for that option. So my recommendation could be to extend, extend it to March 31st and reevaluate at that time. It's also possible that there may be other stimulus packages where we would receive reimbursement for that leave. I know that the, the current plan that's been, that the president has introduced would include reimbursement to local governments to provide that leave. But right now, where we are, there isn't a funding source to reimburse us for the, if we provide the leave between now and any potential stimulus being passed.
It sounds like that's going to get ran through at the federal level. So I, I mean, I have no problem extending it to the end of March. I don't know if anybody else has a, I'll make a motion, we extend the leave policy through the end of March. Second. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Unanimously, so it's extended through March. COVID-19 vaccination distribution update?
I've been participating in several virtual meetings, some, especially with the mayor, for instance, and the city manager concerning the vaccine distribution by the health department. That vaccine is being administered by the, the vaccines that we receive from the state are being administered by the health department at the Rynson Civic Center. I think they're going to have two competing clinics set up so that they can do more vaccines. Their goal was to do 60 vaccines an hour. I just saw that the state is, our state is going to be receiving a higher allotment of vaccines between 1,200 and 1,500 vaccines a week. More than what we were getting. There was a call on Monday and Sandy sat in on that call for me. Apparently they have everything that they need, but when I put this agenda item on, there was a possibility that they might need help with traffic flow because the Civic Center doesn't have the best traffic parking outside. And they didn't want, you know, all 60 people inside the Civic Center at one time. So they were going to register people off the parking lot and then call their number and have them come in. I think that those concerns have been taken care of between the municipal police department and the sheriff's department and the sheriff's reserves. So as of right now, they do not need, I think, anything from us. However, there is a pot of money for the health department to apply for reimbursement for running these clinics and any costs associated with that. We have provided them, we have a store of computers for emergency management. We have issued them all of those computers. We took some from Jeff Schock that referred his supervisors. We issued them those so that they could run the clinics. We also provided additional phone lines at the health department to help with the call volume. And they may come asking for perhaps additional computers or some other equipment to run the clinics. However, I had Michelle go out and meet with them, our Michelle, our finance director, to see what they could apply for through the state to get reimbursed for it before we, they come asking us or any of the cities to provide that funding. Unfortunately, they're short staffed. They're down an administrator and I think they're down an administrative assistant. And the person who is the interim director, who is very competent, doesn't have a financial background at all. So I did offer the services of our finance director to help them. And I know now that they have hired a part-time accountant. So hopefully they can start applying for that reimbursement because I think there are several eligible expenses they could get reimbursed for from the state, which is a pass-through for federal funds to run the vaccination clinics.
Okay, let's just make sure our clients are not overextended, especially during budget time. So it's great you offered that. I think we should, just with budget, just make sure it wraps up or.
I think it was a one-time thing for her to explain to them how to get the funding. And now that they have a part-time individual, I think that person may be able to take over to the state for the reimbursement. And I didn't know for the legislative summit, if you wanted to know this, CCWV's priorities that they'll be presenting on behalf of counties this year.
1% sales tax. Yeah. I look down at the commissioners. Are you going to put a rundown, just hit them?
1% sales tax. There's supporting legislation that will allow county publications and newspapers to be done via our website. They want to eliminate the rollback tax calculation, doesn't impact us now because we're at our max level rates. They're supporting the Airbnb legislation that we talked about earlier. And they support a reduction of time on properties that are sold for unpaid taxes from 18 months to 12 months. So I think there's an 18-month reduction period now and they want to reduce that to 12 months. And it looks like that's it.
Okay.
And we already have the option to collect a 1% sales tax because we have local powers, but we're the only county in the state that has that option.
All right. Any comments or? All right. So I guess we're going to move back to bullet number one and two, update on 911 phone system and discussion of 911 complaint and status of investigations. Did we want to do Nathan's also? I know lunch is, how long do you think your stuff is going to?
It could take a long time, but I'll try to make it shorter. I mean, I will say that the last that I checked, I don't think we have any applicants at the board for today. I know we have to meet. As a board, it is a possibility, I suppose, if no one appears at the board that our, our time to bleed over into that.
Let's strictly focus on these two issues and issues of outside counsel for his own private, our taxpayer money. So what specific agenda item like yours is outside counsel?
I, with regard to my issues, the only outside counsel issue would really be the last one. And I have our other outside counsel ready to go and come, but I think that that might be an executive session issue. I don't know exactly what his findings are. I do want to give you some information about the ESA and fire negligence issue on, on my and, and I think that it's important for you to have the information because of the subject coming up. The other things I'm good on, I know that there is, I am not going to undermine that, that continued discussion and evaluation of the project and position. I think that's why our other outside counsels here, that will be an executive session. Matter of all of them, based on potential liability and our receiving.
Okay, so I'm going to try this here, just because I want to go into executive session twice. We might have to come out, go to lunch and do the board review and then come back. But initially, I'll make the motion, we go into executive session to seek legal advice on update to 911 phone system, discussion of 911 complaint, status investigation, report by counsel as previously assigned by commission, creation of Jefferson County Fire Board. Is that the correct one?
Yes.
Fire Board, Jefferson County Emergency Ambulance Service Board and organization of Jefferson County ESA, including potential structure, financial issues and matters related to there. And then discussion with counsel regarding Charles Town Council changes to Article 147. And under unfinished business, discussion of evaluation and continuation of project manager position.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye. We're in executive session. Take a quick bathroom break for like one or two minutes. For you, I don't know how long.
Gonna call me on the landline?
Hmm.
Because you have to go and see the board.
Alright, I'm moving on to executive session.
Okay.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion? We're in recon session. I'm moving recess until 2:30 and reconvene then. We have floor review at 1:30 and we'll be taking a lunch break.
Thank you.
If I was on motion, I would just say a recess. Do I have to make a floor motion or recess? Okay, so any further discussion on recess? Alright, all in favor say aye. But we're in recess until 2:30.
Because you have to go and see the board.
Alright, I'm moving on to executive session.
Okay.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion? We're in recon session. I'm moving recess until 2:30 and reconvene then. We have floor review at 1:30 and we'll be taking a lunch break.
Thank you.
If I was on motion, I would just say a recess. Do I have to make a floor motion or recess? Okay, so any further discussion on recess? Alright, all in favor say aye. But we're in recess until 2:30.
A power company, I see.
All right, we're back at 2:30 roughly. I'm going to move where you go back to the executive session to seek legal advice on the previously mentioned items prior to recessing.
Second.
Any discussions? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we're in executive sessions.
I told you earlier.
Yeah, we're going to go back into regulations.
Yeah, we're going to go back into regular session now.
I started off strong and then we started faltering at one point.
Did you start? Any discussion? I'll turn around your hand for a second, Jane, as your cap there. Any further discussion on that?
She doesn't have it now.
Oh, you're muted, Jane.
All right, I didn't hear the motion.
Oh, Commissioner Hudson said that he moved to come out of executive session. I second it.
Okay, no problem.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We're in regular session. All right, we're going to move down to unfinished business on the middle of page three. Discussion of evaluation and continuation of the project manager position. So just a little background for county residents that are on the call. This position was created last year in anticipation of the county potentially building a new county complex downtown. We discussed this. Also is created to help with the renovation of the visitors bureau center down in Harper's Ferry. Unfortunately, with what's going on with COVID and the fact that the county complex has been on indefinite hold now, it does not look like it will be completed or even started. I'm going to, based on the terms and the conditions of the employee realignment agreement, I'm going to move, we eliminate the county project manager position effective immediately.
Second.
Any discussion?
Through the end of the day and then begin tomorrow.
Effective immediately through the end of today. Any discussion on that? Commissioner Tab, any discussion?
Yes, sir.
Okay, hearing nothing. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion passes unanimously. All right. We can quickly do county commission reports. Commissioner Tab, would you like to go?
Let's see, can't think, I don't have much here. Just that I know with last meeting, we did not approve the grant to do the, well, wasn't final yet, the regional hazard mitigation plan with Berkeley and Morgan counties. And I hope we don't lose track of that and maybe get more up-to-date information of where they are. I think it would benefit us all to participate, but it's a cumbersome process. You don't know you've got the funding to do it until after you agree to do it. And it's hard to figure out where you are, but I just want to make sure that doesn't fall off the table because it is a requirement. We have to do it. That's all.
Okay, Commissioner Soffer?
I don't have anything right now.
Jackson?
Nothing.
That's a major.
Fire association canceled their meeting due to snow. Solid Waste Authority is working with updating their fee schedule. And we'll be at the Public Service Commission potentially for that coming months. Parks and Rec, not a whole lot. Unfortunately, I heard that they're going to be canceling the fireworks for summer. So that's a bummer. Unfortunately, with what's going on with COVID, not a surprise. But that's all I have. So is there anything else to come before us? I know we have a 3:30 legislative session with our legislators here, which we broadcast also. But if there's nothing else, is there a motion to adjourn?
Send me.
I'll second that. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We're adjourned and we'll reconvene for legislative summit in four minutes.